Appeals. The Board will be entering into executive session under GLC 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of West Falmouth Estates LLC, 19 North Falmouth Highway in North Falmouth, where discussion is, where discussion in open session would have a detrimental impact on the town's litigation position. Following the executive session, the Board will reconvene in open session and invite the public back into the meeting at that time. We need a second.
Second motion.
And a roll call vote.
Fenneran I.
Peterson I.
Duffy I.
Murphy I.
Morse I.
Petrucci I.
Haney I.
Let's go. Okay. I'd like to open with a moment of silence for Jerry Potomac, who recently passed away. Jerry served on the ZBA for seven years, plus he was a wastewater superintendent, and, most importantly, a veteran. So I'd like to take a few minutes for Jerry in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you all. This is Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. Any private party recording this hearing needs to step up to the podium and request permission. I'll introduce the Board. On my far right is Mark Fenneran, a voting member. Next is Scott Peterson, a voting member. To my right is Frank Duffy, our clerk. My name's Suzanne Murphy-Chair. To my left is James Moss, vice chair, Tony Petrucci, an associate, and Nick Haney, an also associate. Then we have Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, office assistant. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws and reviewing and voting on each application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but time may be extended by a vote of the Board. Three, the Board will then question the applicant. Four, the public will be invited to comment. Comments will be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the Chair and should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It will not amplify your voice and record audio for the FCTV viewers. And we also take a minute, if anyone has a public comment, not about anything on our agenda, you can come on up and make a comment. Anybody want to? All right, so we'll move on to our first hearing, which is Moms Beach Place, 369 Walker.
Okay, this is application 1525 Moms Beach Place LLC. They've applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240 10.2A and 240 11.3A 4 of the Code of Falmouth, which is the zoning bylaw, to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling and exceeding lot coverage by structure, or exceeding 20% lot coverage by structure, which is the limit of the bylaw without a special permit. The property's at 369 Walker Street in Falmouth Village. This property is located in an RC zoning district. The flood zone is noted as AE 12. The existing single-family dwelling is a four-bedroom, 1,308 square feet. The proposed dwelling is a single-family dwelling, four-bedroom, 200, excuse me, 2,456 square feet. The shed in the rear is to be removed. The lot is 9,976 square feet, and the zoning district currently requiring 40,000. Street frontage is 46.2 feet in a district which currently requires 100 feet, so that's a nonconformity. Walker Street is a public way at this point. Lot coverage by structure exists. Existing is 13.1%. It's going to increase to 24.6%. The limit is 20, so they need a special permit to exceed 20, but they cannot exceed 25. The average in the district is 18.72. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is 20.5. It'll be increased to 30.2%. The limit is 40. The nonconformities are, the properties to the east, we have a nonconformity, excuse me, well, to the east, which is the streets, 34.7 feet. I don't think so, but anyways.
Side yards, 9.1 versus side.
The side yard setback to the north is 9.1, where 10 is required.
Right, okay. The others are conforming in other respects. The height of the building, it's going to be 34.9 feet, but I don't know what the existing one is. It didn't show on the plan. We have a referral from engineering. They're concerned about that we address the issue of stormwater runoff. There's a driveway permit that's required. They recommend dry wells or a rain garden, or roof runoff and erosion and sediment control. The Board of Health has advised us that the property is on the sewer system. Conservation Commission has issued a negative request for determination of applicability. The Water Department has suggested an upgrade, or requested an upgrade of service to one-inch PE and have the meter moved inside the building. The Building Department has requested an elevation and height certificate upon completion, and also suggested that we, that the wall between the garage and the multipurpose room be removed so it cannot be used as a bedroom. We have no letters in support or in opposition, as noted. And also, there's a condition recommended by the Building Department that the second floor storage space not be converted into a bedroom. Wastewater, no concern. Planning Board, no concern. Assessors, no concern.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I am an attorney here in town, and I am for you tonight representing Edward Weshaka, who is the manager of Moms Beach Place LLC. He's the owner of this property at 369 Walker Street. I'm joined, I don't think that was me, but I'm joined tonight by Brian Foley from Clancy Construction, who's the designer on this project. The applicant's seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling. So 369 Walker is located at the southern end of Walker Street. It's only four houses from the end of the road. The lot's just under 10,000 square feet. It's 9,976. It's in the RC zoning district, and it is in an AE 12 flood zone. Presently, there's a three-bedroom, possibly four-bedroom home, depending on how you count it, a single-family dwelling with a total footprint of 1,308 square feet. The existing dwelling is nonconforming to the side yard setback to the north, again being 9.1, where 10 is required. It's otherwise conforming to setback and lot coverage requirements. This property has been in the applicant's family for 35 years. The needs of the family has changed over that time. They're looking to make significant upgrades structurally, functionally, and aesthetically. So given the location in the flood zone, being an AE 12, the scope of repairs necessitate compliance with the flood zone standards. That would require elevation of the structure, so the bottom of the, the first floor habitable space needs to be at least one foot above the flood zone requirements. In this case, that would be elevation 13, which is just about eight feet above existing grade. The proposed dwelling would reduce clutter in the lot. It eliminates an existing shed and patio, provides garage parking where none currently exists, which is part of the primary dwelling, and reduces the need for outdoor parking. There are four proposed bedrooms, but this is on the sewer district, which allows four bedrooms as a byright matter. The nonconforming side yard setback would be eliminated. It goes from 9.1 to 12.3 feet. The lot coverage by structure does increase, but it increases 24.6%, which may be allowed by special permit. Lot coverage by structure, paving, and parking also increases to 30.2%, which is well below the 40% that is allowed by right within the district. And then lastly, this will also comply with FEMA requirements once reconstructed. So due to the existing nonconformities, this requires a special permit under both 240 10.2A and 240 11.3A 4. Under 240 10.2A, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. You're asked to consider the standards of 240 12.1E and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there's no new nonconformity, and the only existing nonconformities eliminated. A lot of these requirements overlap with those of 240 11.3A 4, so I'm going to kind of jump there. Under that section, in the RC zoning district, lot coverage by structure may exceed 20% by special permit. And then considering that, the Board is asked to look at the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, impacts on views and vistas in public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embankments. In preparing the law comparison worksheet, this house is and will be among the largest in the area. It is a very dense clustered neighborhood. But it's important to note that the homes at the southern end of Walker are generally larger, and this is very much in character with that proposal. The design of this house fits in, fits in that neighborhood very well. It was prepared with that, with an eye towards the immediately abutting properties. The second floor is pulled back. It extends to the rear, and it's by no means an outlier within the area. It's very similar to a project that was approved by this Board about two years ago directly across the street. There should be little impact or shadowing of views and vistas from public way. It is an improvement over the existing conditions, and the existing setbacks are improved. There's no effect of nitrogen on it, because this, again, is on sewer. So this project represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions. Again, the only existing nonconformity is eliminated. Conforms with all setback requirements. Lot coverage by structure may be allowed by special permit, which is in line with the surrounding properties. And the lot coverage by structure, paving, and parking, again, is well below what is allowed by right, and this will comply with the flood zone requirements. So there's no new dimensional nonconformities, no adverse effects, and certainly none that I believe would overbalance the benefits that I've outlined. There's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what is there today. So I believe this meets all the requirements of 240 12 point, 10.2A, 240 11.3A 4, and 240 12.1E. For those reasons, I would ask that you grant the special permit, but I would be happy to address any of your questions or defer them to Brian as need be.
Mark, you want to start off, down there?
Yeah. This kind of brings me back to our discussions on the issues of, you know, density and bulk and what's the definition of a neighborhood, and I think I made my, know that I believe that there are many parts of this town where it's, I mean, maybe I use the term "lost" or whatever, but this is a perfect demonstration of that. It's not substantially different than anything that surrounds it, and it certainly is an improvement, and I have no argument with this one. It's all I got.
That bodes, well, that bodes poorly for some to follow, but.
Well, let me, you know.
Cross those bridges.
The waterfront is, is, is lost.
We'll cross, we'll cross those bridges.
Yeah, every week.
Scott?
Attorney Clower, could you pull up the street view where it shows the four homes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just so folks can kind of get an idea.
I thought this was really informative and helpful in looking at this, and this is, this is what's proposed right here.
So obviously, we'll get into it, but we'll need ASBILs and height and things like this, because you're kind of tickling the 25 at 24.6. More, maybe, if you go back to the floor plan?
We, yeah. I should note that the floor plan was revised and to address the Building Commissioner's comment. There was previously a wall here.
Right.
Where this was a storage area, but that's been eliminated.
Okay. And maybe with the architect, I've never seen a shared deck as opposed to just a deck.
I think it's just to be used by sort of all facets of the house. There's, there's only one unit here, so.
I'm, I'm with you.
Without sharing it with us.
Yeah.
If you ask nicely, maybe.
And the only other one, again, I was just looking at phraseology, the stor, storage area, to me, is, should have been a sitting room. You're up with your elevation, you're looking out into the water. I don't think I have that as a storage area.
That is towards the rear of the lot.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, it's.
Interesting, you know, nomenclature for our friend here, but, yeah. No real, I guess, to Mark's point, nice architectural aspects to it. It certainly needed it, and that is what the neighborhood has become, so I have no questions or qualms. Frank?
Goes that word, neighborhood.
I would like to just follow up with a point that Mr. Peterson made. That street view with the four units, four houses side by side, I really appreciated that, and I think, you know, if, if applicants submit something like this when they're making a rather dramatic change to the property, it would be very helpful. I found it very helpful. So I just want to comment to you on that for future.
No, I, I agree, and, you know, I mean, it, I think it's a, you know, it's hard to dictate, you know, when, some, different people use different architects, and different architects have different tools available. But I really appreciated Brian putting this together, because I thought it was very informative for this project.
All right, other than that, I don't have any questions, so.
Is it going to be the tallest one up there?
I don't believe so. I think.
It's 37 with that thing on the top.
No, it's 34, I can, it's to the ridge, to the, to the top of the deck, it is 34.9, to the top of the rail.
Yeah. Mine says 37, deck.
That's from, that is.
Mean.
That is elevation. That's elevation. So you measure, we measure from grade.
Yeah.
So from four point, so mean to grade, 4.7.
Oh, you're counting the feet off, okay.
So the red line is the height.
I was just wondering about that house that was down further, because it's, it looks way too far. How did they get away with that?
Yeah, that's always confusing, because the architects use from, from.
Different.
Use elevation.
Points, right.
Use the NGVD, whereas we, our bylaw defines height as, from existing natural grade. So, so we start at 4.7. So where that says 37, that is not really 37 from the ground.
Yep. I'm all set, Jim?
Well, the only concern I had was just addressed, what the actual height of the deck was going to be. Otherwise, I would agree, it's a neighborhood that's changed. It's very aesthetically pleasing. I like the architecture. It's very nice. Significant improvement, and I, as to the height, we can deal with that with the condition of framing, a height cert framing. And I've never punished, nor am I going to punish anyone who's bringing a house into FEMA flood compliance, so I have no questions, and thank you.
Tony?
Thank you. Yes, now that that was established, that it's an elevation, that's a question off. One of the things that I had trouble understanding, and I usually can read plans relatively well. So if you go down the right side of the house.
Which page are we looking at, Mr.?
Look at the site plan first. Let's start with that first. So look at the right side of the house going down. You see that first jog, the other side, other side.
Oh, sorry, the side, all right, from the street.
The other right. And anyway, so that is, that's the foundation, and then you go to the elevation itself on A 2.1, page A 2.1. And what I couldn't figure out is that back room where it has the overhang, if you look at the left, so now go to A 2.1. So that, on the left side, you see that overhang there with the stairs? I can't tell by looking at the foundation plan and looking at this if that overhang is now going into the setback.
So that is, that is the bump out, because if you look at the floor plan, that might be instructive. That is the bump out there. That is that overhang, but you have to remember that we're above grade, so the, the, this is the, this is the unfinished space here, and then above that, on the first floor, that's where that bump out is.
All right, so it's not going out beyond the foundation?
No. I mean, it's, so, so we're measuring not to the foundation on the site plan, but to the bump out.
I'm not sure that I understand.
So.
So as I go down the right side of the house, I've got the jog.
Yep.
And then I've got 12 foot.
The 12 foot, three inches is to.
Three inches.
12.3, rather, is to this, this bump out.
To that, and so that bump out is within, is in that 12 foot 3.
That is 12 3 from the bump out to the property line, from the, so.
All right, so it's from the, from the bump out itself, the vertical wall of the bump out.
Yep.
To the property line is 12 3.
So, because, because the bump out doesn't have a vertical wall, so to speak, because this is the foundation here where this line is, this is the bump out, so the 12 3 would be to that point.
So it goes beyond the foundation?
It does, but it's, but the, but the setback here is not to the foundation, it's to the bump out.
That's not foundation.
That's not foundation?
No. That's right, yeah.
Well, then that answers that question. All right, I'm satisfied with that. Going back to the, and I think it's a great design, though, it's a wonderful design. Let me just go back to that area called storage area on the second floor. That could easily be made into a bedroom. How will that be handled so it's not a bedroom?
I mean, it can, this can certainly be conditioned that it's four bedrooms, and then you can have an inspection by the assessors prior to occupancy.
All right, then, because of its height, and because we're at 24.6, probably going to need a certified ASBIL for height.
Yeah, I think the Building Department had requested those, and we're happy to have those as conditions.
Wonderful design, thank you.
Dick, you have anything?
No.
You're all set?
All set.
What's the, what's the, Madam Chairman, go for it.
Through you to the clerk. I'm sorry, I didn't hear when you were reading the record. Just want to be clear, no letters in for or against in the file?
I didn't see any.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I think there was a note on one of the pages that said, I think that stairs and porches were not included in the lot coverage by structure, and I wanted just to double-check on that because.
So I think we had, we had submitted a revised plan last week, which addressed that. That, the stairs and porches were, in fact, counted. That was a note from an early draft. The draftman was corrected that they are included, and we made sure those were counted as part of that percentage.
Okay, good.
So that's part of the 24.6.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Matt.
Just a follow-up on Frank's comment, and I, and I agree that the picture of the four houses does give a perspective, but it can also be used as a tool. I mean, the houses on either side of it could be the typical beach houses that were common to that street in the past, and, I mean, we're, this is something we deal with all the time, and, I mean, everybody's looking for the biggest and the best always, and, I mean, I, you know, you do all the bulk calculations, and this is just something I'm wrestling with, and, I mean, that can be used.
Yeah.
That's all I, I don't disagree that it, it works well there, but just kind of a cautionary note, and you know I'm always looking.
I have a friend who's an engineer who tells, tells me, "Numbers don't lie, people do."
That's what I was saying.
That's something to do with it. Anybody have any other questions before we go to the public? Anybody from the public want to comment on this? Wow. Mark?
I motion to wait. Close. All right, excuse me.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion to close in a second. Anybody have any last-minute questions or comments?
Public comment?
No.
No one?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I didn't ask.
Everyone's all set out there, right? Okay.
Motion to approve with conditions, then.
Well, let's vote on the close first. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed, none. There you go, Scott?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second that.
A motion in a second. Take it away, Frank.
Property's at 369 Walker Street in Falmouth Village. It's in the zoning district RC. The application is for a special permit under Section 10.2A and 240 11.3A 4 of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to raise and reconstruct a nonconforming single-family dwelling and exceed lot coverage of 20% by structure. Flood zone is AE 12, requiring compliance with the flood zone conditions. The lot is 9,976 square feet, and the zoning district currently requiring 40,000, and frontage is 46.2 feet in a zoning district currently requiring 100 feet. Walker Street is a public way at this point. Now, the lot coverage by structure is currently 13.1%. It will increase to 24.6%. Under the zoning bylaw, the limit is 20%, but the applicant is allowed to request an increase up no more than 25% by special permit from this Board. The proposal is to increase it to 24.6%. The average lot coverage by structure, according to a worksheet submitted by the applicant, is 18.72%. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving conforms to the zoning bylaw. It will be 30.2%. The limit is 40. The existing structure is nonconforming with the, the north sideline setback is 9.1, but it, according to the applicant, will be increased to 12.3. All other setbacks conform to zoning. The height of the building will be 34.9 feet, and the zoning district, the maximum limit is 35 feet. Just to clarify, you use 34.9, it's 34 and nine tenths, or 34 feet, nine inches?
Nine tenths.
It is 34 point, nine tenths.
Nine tenths, okay. I previously read the referrals from departments into the, into the record. There is no letters of opposition or in support on file, and there was no public comment on this project at the public hearing. With respect to Section 240 10.2A of the Falmouth zoning bylaw, nonconforming structures, they may be, shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existing nonconforming structures, and we make such a finding. The, the change in this particular case will eliminate the zoning nonconformity with respect to the north sideline, and it reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood and bulk characteristic. With respect to Section 240 11.3A 4, this is to increase the lot coverage by structure. We make a finding that the size and height of the structure proposed is in relative, conforms relatively to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. There's no evidence of adverse shadow effect on adjacent properties. There's no evidence of impact of views and vistas from public ways, and because the property is on a sewer, there'll be no effect of nitrogen on coastal embankments. As far as the general, general conditions for a special permit under Section 240 12.1E, we make a finding that the site is adequate for the proposed use, that it is suitable for the proposed use. There's no evidence of impact of traffic, negative impact on traffic flow and safety. There's adequate sewage disposal because it's connected to the sewer. There's adequate utilities in this neighborhood, and there'll be no effect on the supply of affordable housing. We also note that the houses in the immediate neighborhood are similarly elevated to conform to the FEMA flood zone requirements, and this will allow for a parking, a garage to have parking indoors and no outdoor parking.
I have two additional, Madam Chairman.
Go for it.
CONCON issued an NDA in this matter, and there was a referral from building concerning a wall on the first floor, testimony from the applicant that the, and revised plans indicate that that referral was addressed and that the wall has been removed. Thank you.
Got it. Conditions?
Shed removal, and also the height certification as requested by the Building Commissioner.
He wanted elevation and height certification.
Elevation and height certification.
And setbacks.
No, he only said elevation.
Yeah, he only said elevation and height, that I read.
Well, I think they're tight, it's a tight lot. You've got to go with setbacks.
We're at 24.6, right? We should.
And coverage.
Okay, yeah.
All right, fine.
Unopposed to it.
I mean, they're going to be there. They're going to do the whole thing.
Yeah. Standard hours of work, upgrade the water service per the referral.
All boards.
All boards. All department requirements and requests is presented. Consult the police for traffic control as necessary. Construction hours limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:00 on Saturdays. No construction on Sundays or town-observed holidays. Absent an emergency, any violation of work hour limitations reported to ZBA. May result the applicant being recalled to meeting of the ZBA with such notices the Board deems proper to outline and explain the reasons why there's a violation, what will be done to avoid further violation of the condition. Construction vehicles to be within the lot and not on the street unless approved by the Police Department. Dark sky compliant lighting.
Four-bedroom.
Four-bedroom, remain four bedrooms per sewer regs. No additional lot coverage.
Yeah, that's all I can think of, yeah. That's all I can think of, right? Norine, you think of anything else?
Oh, I have a question for you, Kevin, Attorney Clower. I read in the, in the file it was AE12, but I thought I heard you say AE13.
It is AE12, but in order to be in compliance, you need to be at least elevation 13.
All right, I just wanted to make sure the record was right, okay.
Norine?
So, I guess you did reference engineering.
Yeah.
They did ask for the plan to be updated with dry wells and a construction entrance, so you'll have to add that in as well.
We can do that.
Then we're good?
We do have infiltration chambers for the downspouts. Would that be, I mean, isn't that effectively the same? Doesn't that effectively have the same effect as dry wells?
Oh, for the, yeah, as long as you're complying with the engineering.
The air is closed.
Kind of procedural thing I should have asked earlier, he walked by. Everybody all set to vote on this?
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed none.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, on deck, we have ABC Coast Shores.
Okay, this is, um, application 16-2025, ADC Coast Shore LLC. They've applied to the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240 10.2A and 240 11.3A4 of the Code of Falmouth, which is the zoning bylaw, to raise the existing detached garage and construct an attached garage with habitable space above. The subject property is located at ADC Coast Shores Boulevard in East Falmouth. With respect to the details of the property, it's in an RC zoning district. They've applied for a special permit under section 240 10.2A and 240 11.3A4 of the zoning bylaw to raise the garage and construct an attached garage with habitable space above. There is, um, flood zone is designated X. The existing single-family dwelling is a one-story, three-bedroom, 1,996 square feet. The proposal is for a single-family dwelling, one and a half stories, four-bedroom, 1,967 square feet. The lot size is 8,050 square feet in a zoning district which currently requires 40,000. Street frontage is 115 feet in a zoning district which currently requires 100 feet. Seacoast Shores Boulevard is a public right-of-way at this location. The lot coverage by structure is currently non-conforming. It is 24.79%, and it will be decreased very slightly to 24.43%, but in either case, it exceeds the limit of 20% of the zoning bylaw, so they will require a special permit, which we can give them up to 25%. According to the calculation submitted by the applicant, the average lot covered by structure in the neighborhood is 15.41%. Lot coverage by structure parking and paving is currently 36.2%. Will be decreased to 35.5%. The limit is 40, so it conforms. The non-conformity is the frontage, which is 20.7%, which I think is going to remain the same. The other dimensions conform to zoning, and there'll be no new non-conformities. As far as the height of the building, the proposed structure will be 22.1 feet, which conforms to the zoning bylaw limit of 35 feet. We have a referral from engineering department. They've requested that the applicant obtain a driveway permit, that there be, that the board consider stormwater runoff and appropriately condition the project. And the, there's also an issue with the septic vent in the side yard, which appears to be in the public right-of-way of, I think it's Atwater Avenue. And also for consideration of soil and sediment control. And also a note that the concrete walkway in front, in the front yard, appears to be in the public right-of-way. There's also a hedge at the corner with Atwater, which blocks the view of some people driving cars. So, make this, some, we should address that. The Board of Health says that the septic system is okay for a four-bedroom house, provided, however, if the fourth bedroom, septic system is okay for four bedrooms, but if there is four bedrooms, you may need a D-nitification system. Conservation has no concern, water is, they're okay, and wastewater has no concern. I noted no letters in support or opposition in the file.
Thank you. You're at the plate, Attorney Clower.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, for the record, Kevin Clower. I am representing Dave Fruchello, who is the owner of ADC Coast Shores Boulevard. Mr. Fruchello is here with us this evening, as well as his architect Denise Benoli. We are seeking permission to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling and by raising the existing detached two-car garage, which will be rebuilt as an attached garage with habitable space above. ADC Coast Shores Boulevard is located at the northern end of the Seacoast Peninsula. The board is aware it is a very dense residential neighborhood. This particular lot is 8,050 square feet. It is in the RC zoning district, and it is not in flood zone. So presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling with detached garage. The existing septic system is designed for four bedrooms despite there only being three in the property. The total footprint right now is 1,996 square feet, which is lot coverage by structure of 24.5%. It is non-conforming to front yard setback being 20.7 or 25 required, and to lot coverage by structure being 24.5, or 20 is allowed by right, and up to 25 by special permit, but there is no existing special permit for this property. This otherwise conforms to setback and lot coverage requirements. So as I mentioned, we're specifically requesting to raise the existing two-car garage and rebuild with habitable space on the second floor. This is not proposed as an ADU. It is simply additional habitable space. Due to the existing non-conformities, this does require a special permit pursuant to 240 10.2A for alteration to a non-conforming structure, and by 240 11.3A4 for lot coverage by structure above 20%. Under 10.2A, again, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. You're asked to consider the standard 240 12.1E and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities and pairs of views and vistas and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Under 11.3A4, lot coverage by structure may exceed 20% by special permit. And the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, effects of shadow, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. We did provide a lot comparison worksheet. There's really no change to the footprint. It's coming down slightly by about 30 some odd square feet. The only change is the addition of habitable space above the garage. So this will remain among the larger homes in the area, but this is a modest addition, and the home is certainly not out of line with those surrounding properties. Though there is an increase in ridge height from the existing ridge of 15 to 22 feet 10 inches, which remains well below the 35 feet allowed. It should have little to no impact on views and vistas or shadows. And as I mentioned, although it does include an additional bedroom, the septic system is designed for four, as noted within the health referral. If it's helpful, I actually have a copy of the Title V report from two years ago as well. So this proposal results in lot coverage by structure of 24.4%, which again is a minor reduction from the present coverage and is allowable by special permit. And with the issuance of that special permit, under 240 11.3A4, actually eliminates that as a non-conformity. The lot coverage by structure, paving and parking, though currently conforming, is also improved. It's lowered from 36.2 down to 35.5. As I noted, this is not intended as a separate ADU. It will lack cooking facilities, and we welcome a condition prohibiting still over other cooking facility in, in the new habitable space. So the threshold question, under 240 12.1E, is, does the proposed use have adverse effects that overbalance the beneficial effects of the neighborhood and the town? This lot is more than adequate in size. It doesn't change the nature of the existing or proposed use. It remains a single-family dwelling. It only increases the utilization of that property. There's no impact on traffic flow or safety. It remains in line with the neighborhood character. It doesn't affect public services in any way. So with this project, there's no new non-conformities created. The existing non-conforming lot coverage by structure is eliminated and reduced from its existing point, and it doesn't have any adverse effects that overbalance the benefits. For those reasons, I believe this meets all the requirements of 240 10.2A4, 240 11.3A, and 240 12.1E. I would ask that the board grant a special permit, but I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Let's shake it up and go to this side first. Let's rock the world.
Pouting crazy.
Yeah, I have no questions right now.
Tony?
I do. And is the, is there an existing septic system that's going to be utilized?
Yep, and the existing septic system is four bedrooms. It's designed for four bedrooms, though there are three in the home.
So, and that is why you've made that statement that you said in your application, there'll be no negative effect of nitrogen coastal abeyments because there is no additional nitrogen?
Well, I mean, so we're utilizing a septic system that's designed for the appropriate number of bedrooms, which is what we typically look for. There is an increase in the bedroom count, but I think that it's not as though we're going above what our septic system is designed to accommodate.
And I understand that. So, you know that I bring this up just about every time that we're in a coastal bond overlay district because I don't have definitive answers from anyone. And just let me read this because I'm going to need your help on this for your client. 12.1E, paragraph one is review criteria. And it says specifically that the special permit granting, you know this, but I'm going to read it aloud. The special permit granting agent shall grant a special permit only upon its written determination that the proposed use will not have adverse effects that overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. Now, I'm not, I don't think it has an issue with the neighborhood because it's a typical design of the neighborhood. But because we have a very serious nitrogen problem in this town, it has a detriment, it may have a detrimental effect on the town. And this is, this bylaws, we all know, is wide open for interpretation. And I think I need, one speaking is one member, I need your help to help me understand why there is no detrimental effect to the town with regard to nitrogen, given that we have a very bad problem and under a mandate by the state. And you're not providing any evidence that we are not having a problem, because how do we write this up?
Well, I don't think it's incumbent on the applicant to show that there's no nitrogen problem throughout the whole town. And we know that there's an issue, but 12.1E.
Page 128.
So, it says adequacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage. That's the consideration relative to, to septic. And we can establish through what the health department's referred, and also through the Title V report, that there is an existing four-bedroom system. So I would say that the system that's on the site, as is, is adequate for the sewage disposal that's going to be required. I think that if this was a situation where they were replacing the system, that I would 100% agree that it should be a denitrification system, but because they're utilizing an existing system that's already designed to accommodate the number of bedrooms that they're proposing, I don't believe that they should be required to put in a new denitrification system, when that's not part of the application in general. If and when the health department ever requires a denitrification system to go in, that's something they'll have to deal with. But, you know, they're, the health department isn't real clear what the regulations are going to be yet. It might be triggered by some sort of substantial improvement. It might be triggered by any number of things. But as of right now, there's no requirement for denitrification system. They're not putting in a new system. And even if they're putting in a new system in general, I would say, yes, they should do a denitrification system. But because the existing system is designed and is more than adequate to address the septic flow that's being proposed, I would defer to the health department, which says that they're, they've agreed that it's a four-bedroom system, and that that is adequate for the consideration under 240 12.1E.
I'm not sure I completely disagree with you on that. As I do struggle with this. But you did make a statement, there will be no negative effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments, and that comes without any basis, foundation whatsoever. And how, so how does this, so when you take that statement that you've made, all right, how does this board write it up as this 12.1E, paragraph one, requires it to write it up? Because we're doing it without any basis of fact to know that.
Well, I think you have some basis of fact to say that the system that is there. So you're, we're conflating two things. We're conflating 240 11.3A4, which talks about nitrogen on coastal abeyments. And then we're talking about 240 12.1E, which talks about adequacy of sewer disposal. So, under the considerations for 240 12.1E, the board can make a finding that the septic system is currently designed for four bedrooms. And there were proposed four bedrooms, and therefore...
For how do you define what this says? And I, and Madam Chair, just give me a couple of minutes.
Go for it.
So, how do I see, or how should I look at whether or not there's a detrimental effect to the town? I can see why there's not a detrimental effect to the neighborhood because the house fits in, all right? The setbacks work, the height works. But the town itself has to suffer from every new bedroom added to the community, in one way or another. And you're not proving or giving this board an opportunity to be able to write this up in a way that it can satisfy 12.1E.
See, I think you can, because those are factors the board is asked to consider. And they're not, it's not as though you have to satisfy each and every one. They're factors for consideration. And I think that, one, you can establish that there is an adequate septic system to address what's being proposed.
And, and, Madam Chair, one more, and I will end this, I promise you I will end this.
Please.
Because, but when we use the word shall, shall grant a special, this, the special permit granting, shall grant the special permit only upon its written, shall grant the special permit only upon its written determination that the proposed use will not have adverse effect. What do we write? Help us write something.
So, I think you can find that the adverse effects do not overbalance the benefits that are proposed. And I think you can find, if you continue reading, it says the determination shall indicate that the proposed use will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw, and shall include consideration of each of the following. It's a consideration, it's not a, it's not a must. It's, it's, these are factors for you to consider. And I think that you can find that, again, we satisfy the adequacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage. I think that if we start taking the position that any addition of a bedroom is, is a detriment, well, that's going to really hamstring a lot of development throughout town. Here we have a system that is, we're not even, it's not even though as we're proposing to put in a new system to accommodate it. We, we have the space to accommodate it. They could put in, they could create a new bedroom within the existing house. And, you know, that would, that would have been allowed. Or we could, and if there was four bedrooms, we could have rejiggered that such that we eliminated a bedroom to add one above the garage.
My last comment, and I'll end. When you made a statement in the application that it does not have any detrimental nitrogen effect, your words, all right, that means in my, it says, will, will be no negative effect of nitrogen on coastal, that means that you have evidence that exists that you can help this board write into its decision, and I don't think you have that evidence.
Well, I'm happy to submit a copy of the Title V report, which does indicate that it's designed for four bedrooms, as evidence for the board.
Thank you.
Jim?
Couple, thank you very much. Attorney Clower, just one follow-up on a septic question. Is there sufficient space or reserve area if D-nit is ordered? After these changes are made?
Sure, so there is, I don't think these changes will impact the ability to put in a new system. Now, we're utilizing an existing system, so it's not as though it's designed to accommodate a denitrification system the way we have these new systems that are going in that aren't D-nit, but, but are able to slot in. However, I haven't had this discussion with Mike Porcelli, who's the engineer, but just looking at the existing versus proposed, I don't think that if there, if there is room, there is room. If there isn't room, what we're doing isn't changing that ability.
Thank you. Thank you. Just to clarify, what is the ridge height? I've heard two conflicting, 22.1 and there are 22.10.
So, on...
I just want to make sure we have it right for the findings.
On sheet, it is shown as...
10 I have.
Yeah, it is shown as 22...
Wait, hold on.
Yeah.
So 22 feet 10 inches?
Yeah.
Thank you. Well below what's allowed. I just want to make sure we have an accurate finding. So there were a couple comments from engineering that raised, I think, some concerns. I presume that your client's not going to have any problem obtaining a condition or not have any objection to obtaining licenses for any encroachments?
No, of course not.
In terms of the lot calculation coverage, the engineer, excuse me, building noted that there were some abeyments, namely the concrete walkways, that had not been previously noted?
We did submit a revised plot plan.
Okay.
A few weeks ago, which is the one we're looking at right now.
And I just want to make sure that your lot calculations based on coverage include those...
So it was, you know, I think the original plan showed this as a gravel walk and it became a bituminious concrete walk. This revised plan also shows the existing septic vent to be relocated. So it's existing, it's right here, it's being relocated here. You can see that on the plan. So all of the concerns that were raised by the engineering referral have been addressed through the revised plan, which was submitted two or three weeks ago.
Nope, I think that's it. Your clients are in the right business to put in the walkway, so I have no objection. Just want to make sure that for the record that the, that's part of the calculation. So thank you.
And the hedges came up in Mr. Duffy's reading of the referral. I'll just note that the, the engineering referral actually says, "The hedges appear to cause a site distance issue. We will require," we meaning engineering, "will require removal trimming to provide adequate site distance as part of the driveway permit." So we have to get a driveway permit as part of this, so that will be addressed through that process.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
All set. Frank?
Just want to clarify, there are existing three bedrooms in the, in the principal house. Now, are there going to be four bedrooms in the principal house?
Three bedrooms in, well, it, the short answer to that is yes, because the garage is part of the house now. The garage is being attached to the house.
Well, it is part of the house, but it's, it's a, it's habitable space. It doesn't say it's a bedroom.
So it is a bedroom above the garage.
It's a bedroom above the garage.
So there'll be one bedroom above the garage.
Right.
And three, three in the main portion of the house.
Fine. So the comment then by, I guess, Board of Health, that if the fourth bedroom becomes an ADU, there must be a D-Nite system installed on the property. But you have said...
We're not.
That there's no intention of making an ADU or an...
This, this doesn't meet the requirements to be an ADU.
Because there's no cooking facilities or separate entrance or anything like that.
Well, it's not, well, there are no cooking facilities. The, the main reason we didn't do an ADU is because of the size of the main portion of the dwelling, because it's limited to 50% of the main portion of the house, which is only about 1,000 square feet. So, because of that, we chose not to do this as an ADU, which was discussed with the building department and with the planning department. So they're, they're not putting in cooking facilities, so it will not be an ADU.
Okay.
At this time.
So we make that as a finding, you've represented it, it will not?
And, and again, I, you know, anytime we make a finding like that, I, I like to leave it open so that if the regulations should change down the line and they want to go and get a permit to become an ADU...
I think that's understood, but at present time, you're not doing it.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Scott?
All set. Great questions from the panel here, so they answered all of my open questions, so thank you.
My turn. First off, you just said "bituminious," it's bituminous, containing bitumen, which is tar.
I put the wrong emphasis on the wrong syllable.
Yeah. In your application, you're looking, seeking a special permit under 240 10.2A and 11.3A, code of Thelma to raise the existing garage, detached garage. You're asking permission to raise the garage. You already have raised the garage. It no longer exists, so perhaps you can explain to me, if the garage doesn't exist, how do you maintain your pre-existing condition?
The only nonconformity would be the lot coverage by structure, which we're requesting to go to 24.4. The garage itself is not nonconforming to any setback requirements and will continue not to be nonconforming to any setback requirements.
And the setback from the road is 20.7, so...
That's to the front of the steps. The garage is 28.5 from the road.
Other than that, I like, it's, it's very unusual. I mean, I went there and the garage was...
Gone.
Non-existent, gone, which, and of course, to be, put yourself in that condition, it's very unusual. That's all I got.
Against advice of counsel.
Huh?
Was the garage raise permit, did you get a permit to raise it?
Yeah. That's the, the other obvious...
Did you get a permit?
Yes. And the garage had to come down.
I know, I was shocked when I went there today myself.
And the building permit, and then once we got the building permit issued, we got, issued a permit for the demolition of the garage, and then it came that we had to come to the board for the ZBA thing. But I had to take down the garage for insurance reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Tony.
I just want to point out that this is just a Title V official inspection, does not support the statement that there'll be no negative effect of nitrogen. This is just a Title V septic system inspection and has no measurements as to nitrogen load, so...
You can keep that for the file.
Unfortunately, Mr. Clawer, I'm a back bench, tonight will not be voting.
But you can look forward to further.
Yeah. Page six, I believe, does indicate the size it's designed for.
It's designed. It does not talk about nitrogen flow.
That's not part of a typical Title V inspection.
Why not?
I don't have the stamp, so don't forget. Anyway, any other further questions up here before we go to the public? Anybody from the public want to comment? Mona? Name an address, please.
Hi, my name's John Trowbridge, so I live at 24 Atwater Drive, and I am directly adjacent to ABC Coast. And that's, anyway, that's my permanent residence there at 24 Atwater. So I'm a, also, I'm a civil PE, so I have an understanding of zoning regulations and construction drawings. So I do want to make a comment about the proposed living space over the garage. Now, I know the applicant, Kevin, has said that it is not an ADU, and I, I don't know Kevin, seems like a nice guy, but I disagree with him, absolutely disagree. This is an accessory apartment. It's got a bedroom, a full bath, an area up there that's a combination dining, kitchen, living room. It has a separate entrance going up to the garage. And existing living space in the main house is not connected to this proposed living space over the garage. So it's, it's not simply just an extension of some living space that's there. So my concern is that, I don't know if the town has reviewed this, this plan so that they take it under consideration as an accessory apartment, because I feel it absolutely is an accessory apartment. Now, I've heard Kevin say that, oh, there's not going to be a cooking surface provided. And, and I'm looking at this saying, well, I can go buy an electric range and install that in that apartment in less time than it takes to hold this meeting. So it's, for me, it sounds like, oh, there's, there's no coffee maker up there, so it's not an ADU. So I, I don't agree with it, with that at all. I think it absolutely is an ADU, and I think that just the town needs to look at it as an ADU and make sure it's compliant before we build it. Because after it's, after it's built, then it's, it's too late. Then all, all you're going to do is be back here in six months for another, you know, zoning appeals when, when the unit is going to be used as an ADU. Because I think it will be used as an ADU. There's no other reason why you would put a bedroom, a bathroom, a living, dining, kitchen area over a garage and not use it as an ADU. That doesn't make sense. So I just want to make sure that we're going the right way and the town is looking at this appropriately before it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, can you address that? Because it does say kitchen right on the plans.
It does. You can have a kitchen, but you can't have...
But you can't tell me you're not going to have a kitchen and then put kitchen on your plans?
But you can have a kitchen. What you can't have is cooking. So definition of dwelling is a building, a portion thereof used exclusively for residential occupancy, living, sleeping, cooking, and eating. The building department and this board's position has long been that if you eliminate cooking facilities as well as conditioning it, that it doesn't constitute a separate dwelling. The point of an ADU is that you can rent it separately. They're not looking to rent this separately. This is to be rented as, used as one unit. So you would do an ADU if you wanted to bifurcate it or be able to rent that portion separately from the main dwelling. That's not what's being done here. This is, we do guest suites and houses all the time. You can have a kitchen. You can have a wet bar. You can have cabinets. You can have a refrigerator. You can't have cooking. And that is how we have always conditioned decisions of this nature. So, in, in speaking with Gary, because we did speak with Gary Street about this, he agreed that if it's, if we're not putting in cooking, it's not an ADU. That's always been the way we've handled these things. So what we're proposing is a condition that it not be an ADU, in which case that could not be used separately from the main portion of the dwelling. It can only be used in conjunction with the main portion of the dwelling.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Feel free. This is, I'm going to make the statement, this is an ADU. Just because it doesn't have a stove or an oven, it doesn't matter. It says kitchen. And I, and I understand the explanation. I guess what I would like to know as one member is, how do we know that two years from now the applicant decides that they're going to put a stove in there? It's so easy, you can do that in, in less than a day, put it in there. I know it's going to be recorded, but we need to condition this, that it's not going to be an ADU. That special permit is then recorded. I'm just trying to give comfort here. That special permit is, is recorded. But the plans, I'm wondering if maybe in the plans you take out that corner counter sink and refrigerator and on the counter unit, whatever that is, because it's not labeled, and take off the word kitchen just to make everybody feel comfortable.
The thing is, you can have a wet bar and you can have a refrigerator.
But that's not what this is. It says kitchen.
Sure, I can take off the word kitchen.
If it said, living room, dining room, wet bar, cathedral, whatever cathedral is.
Ceiling.
Yeah. I know. But that might be different. But I think people have concerns. We have an abbot who is concerned by that. And I know this one member is concerned about that, and I don't know what the others.
So there are enforcement mechanisms by which if someone violates a special permit, they can be brought, you know, brought, enforced through the building department. And I would say that, you know, there, there is case law that says you can't use conjectured bad acts against an applicant. You can't assume they're going to do the wrong thing. Here we have some...
Am I conjecturing?
Well, conjecturing that they're going to put it in the stove in two years.
Okay, I just want to understand.
So, you know, you, you, what you're not supposed to do is assume someone's going to do the wrong thing. We have someone, the applicant here is a business owner in town. He's lived here in town his entire life. He's someone that has had to, for, for many reasons, have a good working relationship with the building department. He's not going to jeopardize that to put in a stove. And the, the fact of the matter is, you know, we, we put conditions on decisions and we have to believe that people will abide by them because they're supposed to. This, you know, an ADU is, is a defined term. It is not proposed as an ADU. It's not proposed to be used separately apart from the house. It is meant to be used in conjunction with the main portion of the dwelling.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation.
Yeah, from my experience, the building department for years has considered a dwelling to include cooking facilities. They don't use the word kitchen. They use cooking facilities. It's a distinction. I understand it's a, but it's the way they've been doing it for years.
Now, we got ADUs in the ballgame and those were never around.
Which require one more extra step than the septic.
Right.
Which...
Mark, you have a question?
Well, no, just to point out, it's a matter of semantics. You said that it won't be used separately, but there is separation.
Well, I think that's just the nature of the design.
Oh, yeah.
But I mean, it's, you know, when you, when you're adding a garage to an existing dwelling, you know, you're, you're not going to tear off the entire outer wall to, to blend it together when you can connect it with a breezeway.
Or put a door.
What's the size of that room?
728 square feet.
Thanks.
So it's a good-sized room. Three rooms. Anybody else from the public want to comment? Anyone else up here have any?
Motion to close, I guess.
You guys all set to close?
A second.
Motion to close in a second? Frank, you going to do the findings?
No, we're going to vote on the motion to close.
We'll vote on that? We, we shall. I forgot last time. I mean, I remembered last time, I forgot this time. All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Now you...
Motion to approve conditions.
Second.
Okay. The property is located at ABC Coast Shores Boulevard in East Thelma. It's in an RC zoning district. They've applied for a special permit under section 240 10.2A of the Thelma zoning bylaw and 240 11.3A4 of the Thelma zoning bylaw to raise the garage and construct an attached garage with habitable space above. The flood zone is designated as X. The existing property is a single-family dwelling, one-story, three bedrooms, 1,996 square feet. The proposal is for a single-family dwelling, one and a half stories, four bedrooms, 1,967 square feet. As represented, the lot is 8,050 square feet in a zoning district currently requiring a minimum of 40,000 square feet. Street frontage is adequate. It's 115 feet where 100 is required. C Coast Shores Boulevard is a public right-of-way at this location. The lot currently, lot coverage by structure currently does not conform to zoning. It is 24.79%. It will be 24.43% upon completion of the proposed construction. The limit is 20, so they need a special permit to exceed 20 with a maximum of 25% allowed. According to the calculations submitted, 15.41% is the neighborhood average. Lot coverage by structure conforms to the zoning bylaw, which is 40%. It's going to be 35.5% upon completion. The nonconformity, existing nonconformity is the, the westerly sideline, which is the front yard. It's 20.725 is required. There'll be no new nonconformities in this project. The height of the building, the proposed building, will be 22 feet 10 inches, which conforms to the zoning bylaw, which has a 35-foot minimum or maximum requirement. I read into the record the referrals from engineers. Mr. Clawer has indicated that he has submitted a revised plan, which addresses some of the issues of the engineering department, namely the stormwater runoff and also the issue of the front walkway, the vent for the septic system, which is in the right, public right-of-way of Atwater Drive, and the...
Hedges.
Hedges at the corner of Atwater Drive and C Coast Shores Boulevard, which will be addressed as part of the driveway permitting process at DEP, or at DPW.
Yes.
Excuse me. The, there's also representation that the space above the garage, which is a habitable space, will not be an ADU. It can not, we probably will have a condition about that. It has no cooking facilities in order plan. That's a statement that was made by Mr. Clawer. Under section 240 10.2A, we make the finding that the proposed structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existing, than the existing nonconforming structure. The change will not result in any new nonconformities and it reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. Under section 240 11.3A4, we find that the size and height of the proposed structure is in keeping and relative to the average of the neighborhood. There are no shadows reported that will impact adjacent properties. There is no evidence of impact of views and vistas from public ways, and there's no evidence of an impact of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. The special permit conditions, general conditions under 240 12.1E, we find that the site is adequate for the proposed use. The site is suitable for the proposed use. There's no impact or negative impact on traffic flow and safety. There's adequate sewage disposal, as evidenced by a... There's adequate sewage disposal, as evidenced by a statement of the Board of Health that the septic system is designed for a four-bedroom house. The attic, there's adequate utilities and there's no evidence of a negative effect on the supply of affordable housing. There was no noted letters in opposition, but however, we did have a, an abbot to speak at the hearing. Mr. Trowbridge at twenty-four Atwater Drive spoke in opposition to the project, and he was concerned about the use of the space above the garage as an ADU.
Any other findings? Anybody else?
Did you get the total five inspection in? There was, there was a finding?
Yes, I mentioned that.
That it's being used to support the statement that there'll be no negative effects of nitrogen on coastal abeyment.
I just got the, the fact that there is a referral from the Board of Health that the septic is appropriate for a four-bedroom house, and the, the Board of Health did say that if the fourth bedroom becomes an ADU, they would need a D-Nite system, but they represented at the hearing, they're not gonna use it as an ADU.
We're gonna see a few more of these.
Yeah. All right, conditions. No ADU. No one condition.
I would also suggest we put in no cooking facilities.
Yep.
And no rental.
No rental.
No rental.
Separate from the main house.
Separate from the main house. Well, you're gonna charge your kids rent if they live there.
I got too many kids. I need to start paying.
Per plans?
Per plans. All boards.
Work hours?
Police. Applicant shall consult with police for traffic control. Construction hours, seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, eight AM to four on Saturdays. No construction on Sundays or town-observed holidays. Absent an emergency. Any violation of work hour limitations reported to the ZBA may result in the applicant being recalled to a meeting of the ZBA with such notice as the board deems proper to outline and explain the reasons why there is a violation. Construction vehicles and materials should be located within the lot, not in the street. Doc Sky compliant lighting.
Four bedrooms, right?
Four bedrooms, increasing from three bedrooms to four bedrooms, right? Driveway permit is going to encompass the hedges. It, it, does the driveway permit affect the, the septic vent?
So I was gonna propose, Madam Chairman, that all encroachments into public, to the town ways are either removed or the applicant must obtain licenses from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. That's, that's perfect. Yep. That includes the driveway apron and all that, right? Okay. All right. Anybody have any other conditions?
Atwater's private, I believe, in that area, so that, that apron would not require-
They're both public right-of-way.
Yeah, it's public in here. Didn't engineering say it was public at water?
Across streets.
I'll clarify my condition.
I checked.
All encroachments into public ways shall either be licensed by the Board of Selectmen or removed. If it's not public, it doesn't apply.
Okay. Any other?
Both, both streets are public.
That's what I thought it said in here, yeah.
Noreen, anything else?
I think you got it right there.
Okay.
No sheds or do we have to add any other structures on the property or not? I think, yeah, I think we're good. Per plans. Did you say that one right off the bat?
Probably.
All right, so ready to vote? I'm having a tough time, actually. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate your time on this hearing tonight.
All right. On deck, we have twenty-eight Boston Street. Dooley.
This is the application, eighteen of the year twenty-twenty-five. James Iron, Kathy M. Dooley. They've applied to the Falmouth zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to section ten point, 240-10.2A of the Code of Falmouth, which is the zoning bylaw to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The property is located at twenty-eight Boston Street, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. All right, so that property, which is located in an RC zoning district, there's an existing single-family, three-bedroom dwelling that measures out at twelve-hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet. The proposal is for a single-family dwelling, four bedrooms at twelve-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet. The flood zone is AE twelve, so there will have to be some accommodation of that. There's no previous decisions of the Board of Appeals on record. The lot is four-thousand-eight-hundred square feet in a zoning district, which requires forty-thousand. The frontage is sixty feet in a zoning district, which requires one-hundred feet. Boston Street is a public right-of-way at this location. The lot coverage by structure is currently twenty-six-point-four percent, which exceeds the limit of twenty percent. The lot coverage by structure will be twenty-six-point-one percent, which is a tad shorter or a tad less. But again, the limit is twenty percent with a special permit up to twenty-five percent. But since it's, it's an existing condition and they're reducing the size, it's, probably have a special permit, but we'll decide that. Lot coverage by structure is thirty, structure parking and paving, excuse me, is thirty-two percent. It will increase to thirty-nine-point-nine. The limit is forty. The setbacks, there are two nonconforming setbacks. The east is seven, is seven feet and the south, which is the street, is ten-point-seven feet. That will remain nonconforming. The east sideline will remain nonconforming. The other, the other setbacks are conforming. There's no note on this, that I could find in the file on the present height of the building, but the proposed building will be thirty-three feet, eight inches. We have referrals from the engineering department. They require a driveway permit that we consider stormwater runoff, dry wells for roof runoff, erosion and sediment control. The Board of Health notes that this property is on the public sewer. The Conservation Commission has issued a negative request for determination of applicability, so they're satisfied. The water department requires an upgrade of the service to one-inch PE and the meter be in the house. Wastewater has no concern. Building has no concern. Fire is no concern. And we have two letters in support in the file.
Before you start, Kevin, we have a, go ahead.
In the interest of time, Madam Chair, Kevin, this is almost like they staked out a different house. There are just numerous things. Well, let's start at the front. The stake on the front that says the steps is one feet, six inches. You got three steps here, which is the minimum, twenty-one inches. It does not include the four foot. There's no stake for the four foot for the covered landing. The front left corner of the house is marked corner of the house. The stake in the back is thirteen feet away from the existing twenty-four-foot-seven house, which instead of thirty-two, as indicated on this plan, brings you up to thirty-seven. Your, and if you multiply thirteen by the thirty-eight, you got, what, thirteen, four, five, twenty, minus twenty-six, you got about four-hundred-and-ninety-six square feet extra plus the sixty on the front. I mean, there's no way that you can be reducing the coverage of this. You say that you are reducing the east setback from seven to eight, when the stake is clearly in line with the side of the house. This is just completely wrong.
I can address the last one, because the eight is to the utility area, eleventh to the house on the, on the eastern setback.
But there's no, there's no change between the stake and the existing house.
So-
So how can the, unless you stretch the land out on the side?
So I had emailed the engineer. I, I send out reminders when I get the notices. I had spoken with Tim Santos from Merrill. He confirmed that the site was staked, but I will have to-
I have pictures, but I mean, the, the back corners of the house, the two stakes are thirteen feet beyond the existing house. The front stake indicates is right on the corner of the house. It indicates that that's the front of the house. Like I said, the, the stakes for the steps are, I measured them, they're one point, they're, they're, they're eighteen inches, they're one-point-five. There's just no way that the stakes that you have there are this house. Absolutely not.
So, I don't-
I mean, to continue is just a waste of our time.
So I don't do the staking, but I, I had reached out to the engineer. I'll have to reach out to him again. He's obviously not here this evening, to have him go out and verify the staking. So I can't do much beyond that.
No, I understand, but I mean, there's just some mistake that was made. I, you know, you're not, you're not trying to sneak another, you know, five-hundred-and-twenty square feet and say you're reducing it by whatever it is, twelve. I mean, it's just a mistake.
Sure.
I don't understand how it happened, but-
I'll, I'll, I'll have to speak with him. I just, you know, I can't, I can't speak to how it was done or, or why I might be wrong, but if there's an error, I will make sure that it is rectified. Understanding we're at an impasse for this evening, what would the continued hearing, possible continued hearing date be?
Clara, if you're gonna redo the staking, I, I found it not very useful that you're, the plan submitted was only the proposed house. You don't have any existing condition planned.
It does show the existing house on, on the plan.
It's very, not a very useful plan, frankly.
I have one other issue that I believe Mr. Duffy started to get into when he was reading the, opening the file, and I don't know how the board feels. I would ask both the applicant and I'll ask the board through you, Madam Chairman, if they wanna ask the opinion of Town Council. We have a pre-existing nonconforming structure that's over the permissible lot coverage. What's proposed is not modification, it's a raise and then rebuild, and it would then be, and I'm looking at, is this considered a new structure that, can we give a special permit that it's gonna be a twenty-six percent? I realize it's a reduction. The plans and what's proposed are a significant improvement, look very nice. I just wanna make sure that we have some legal authority to do that. So I don't know if the board has an appetite just to ask Town Council to weigh in if this is permissible.
I would concur with that. On a raise and rebuild, yes.
Especially if we're gonna continue it anyway.
I mean, historically-
Have historically done a lot of them.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure we have some solid footing if we're gonna go forward.
The case law holds that on commercial structures, they need to come into compliance, but residential structures don't, if there is a section six finding that what's proposed is not substantially more detrimental. That being said, of course, you should verify that.
If you wanna throw in some case law between now and the continuance, that would be appreciated.
Nothing would make me happy.
Tony, do you have anything?
Lexis, Lexis Clower.
Nick, you good? Noreen, do we have a date?
June five.
June. Geez. Where'd they go?
Madam Chairman, through you, Noreen, are you clear what the, the question we are asking, we're asking the Town Council to weigh in on, is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
June fifth is fine for me, I'll be here.
Anybody wanna?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn to June fifth.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? So we're not going to the public because we're just continuing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, guys.
All right. Last but not least.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, what happened?
Two-minute recess.
Obvious.
Two-minute recess.
It wasn't intended, I can guarantee that. It wasn't intended, I can guarantee that.
This is application number nineteen of the year 2025. Lars Bergren. Um, he's applied to the Falmouth zoning board of appeals for a special permit and or variance pursuant to sections two forty, ten point two A, and section two forty, twelve point three A of the Code of Falmouth, which is the zoning bylaw, to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling and to allow the existing dwelling to remain in place until the proposed dwelling has been completed. The property is located at thirty-three Martin Road in East Falmouth, also known as Wachquite out there. So the property's at thirty-three Martin Road in Wachquite. Uh, the zoning district is AGA. The special permit requirement, uh, request is under section two forty, ten point two A of the zoning bylaw, and the, um, um, variance request is under section twelve point three A of the Falmouth zoning bylaw, to, um, raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and allow the existing dwelling to remain until the proposed single-family dwelling has been completed. The property is located in a historic district, it's also in the Wachquite Bay coastal pond overlay district. The flood zone is designated AE ten, or a part of the property is designated AE ten. Again, it's within the Wachquite Bay ACE, EC, which stands for area critical environmental concern. The, uh, there's coastal bank on the property and there's wetlands in the property and related buffer areas for the, those respective zones. Um, the lot, which is a new lot, uh, by combining, uh, under the approval not required, require, approval not required procedure of the planning board, thirty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-three square feet in a zoning district, which now requires forty-five thousand square feet. The street frontage is two hundred and twenty-seven point four feet, which is adequate because the zoning district requires one hundred and fifty feet in this particular zoning district. Martin Road is a public right-of-way at this location. The lot coverage by structure existing is seven percent, it will be increased to ten point eight percent, the limit is twenty, so that conforms. Lot coverage by structure parking and paving is seven point four percent, it will increase to twelve point four percent. The limit is forty, so that also, um, conforms to zoning. The setback, the, 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 uh, non-conforming dimension is the northerly line, which is the street line at Wach, at, um, Martin Road. It's currently eight point four percent, the proposed building will be twenty-one point nine, did I say percent, I mean feet, um, twenty-one point nine feet. I have no indication in the file about the height of either the existing building or the proposed building, so we'll have to get that from the applicant during the public hearing. Engineering has, um, sent a referral, they want us to consider stormwater runoff, and they note there's a build, might be a building numbering issue, which has to be addressed by them. The Board of Health has also advised us that this property, or at least part of it, is in a nitrogen-sensitive area. They're okay with the four-bedroom septic system that exists, uh, and there's, uh, it has an IA, it has, excuse me, has a reserve area for future use for an IA system. Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over part of the property, and they issued an order of condition for the project on September of 2024. The water department has rec, has requested that the water service be upgraded to one-inch PE. Um, the planning board, um, approved, or excuse me, endorsed an approval-not-require plan to combine two lots to create the existing lot, and the, um, demolition of the existing property has been approved by the historic commission. Um, the building commissioner also requires that the ANR plan, which is the subject of the property at the present time, be recorded in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. Looking at the file, I noted no, no letters in opposition or letters in support of this particular project, and as for findings, we can, uh, address them because there are some unique characteristics to this property, including the property.
Madam Chair.
Mark.
Again, in the interest of time, uh, I, uh, visited this property early this week, and when I pulled it to driveway, the, uh, applicant approached me and, uh, asked me who I was. I told him I was with the zoning board, and he said, "Well, I'll be seeing you, uh, tomorrow night." And he, I go, "Well, technically, we're not supposed to talk or speak." Um, and he goes, "Well, I just wanted to tell you why I moved some of the stakes." And I asked him if he read the application, he said yes, and that was the extent of our conversation. Um, I got out of the car and did my usual, started at the front, there was no stake on the right-hand side of the property. As indicated on this plan, uh, I don't know when the property was staked, but the stakes are very old. It says here that the concrete corner bound was found. I went and found the concrete corner bound, it was three feet in front of a stake that existed, and it was leaning at an angle, which you see sometimes, especially in older properties. So I put my foot on it and it just rolled away. Uh, the concrete bound had been removed and moved somewhere else, there was no indication of the broken piece of concrete underneath it. Um, I went to the backyard and, uh, walked around the front, I didn't even bother to go into the backyard. When I got back to my car, I saw the applicant leaning one of the stakes up against the picnic table that I wasn't aware, uh, so, uh, just as in the last case, the, I mean, uh, the, the staking requirements aren't met, I mean, um, it, it's an absolute necessity for me, I'm, you know, I mean, I, it's a necessity for everybody, it's on the application, so to continue is, uh, and, and like I said, that concrete ba, uh, bound being moved, um, you know, there's, there, there's, you know, maybe it broke somehow or whatever, but you're not supposed to touch or move historic bounds.
No.
Those two stakes were in the driveway, that's the only reason they were removed.
Um, there, there's no corner lot, the, the, the corner bound, as I said, is, uh, the concrete bound is not, uh, attached to the ground, I mean, where it broke off of, I, I didn't, I wasn't gonna go search because there were already four, right there. Um, and, and that's why I ask you if you read the application.
I know one of them is actually on the neighbor's property.
Oh, it's still...
The fence is actually on my property towards town.
The chain-link fence?
Yeah, that chain-link fence, that's the guy who used to be in charge of the highway department, he's since retired. My property goes actually onto his property, that's where one of those is. The other one, I can't speak to those things.
Yeah, and then the, the...
I'm, I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize the importance of, I, there's, there's thirty stakes all over my property that I haven't touched.
A lot of those are conservation, which we don't concern ourselves with.
Oh, okay, well, I mow around them and I leave them there, and I haven't touched them. The two that were in the driveway are the only ones that are removed because...
It, it's been some time, obviously, and it's just not sufficiently staked for our, and I mean, it's on the application.
Oh, I thought the house is what matters.
They both matter.
It's all on the application, I mean, you indicated that you read it, but apparently...
Yeah, I saw one leaning against the picnic table myself.
You mean, we can't proceed because of those two stakes? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yes.
It's right there, all lot corners, it's the first row with the application.
Well, the engineers should have done that, I thought they did their due diligence.
Well, you, you admitted to me that you moved some stakes. I came back and, uh...
That's because they were in the driveway and they'd be running over.
When I came back, you were leaning one against the picnic table.
The one in front of the grill, I actually backed my car out of and make a point of not hitting it. It's like, it's been totally in my way and I leave it there, and I don't even touch it.
Well, we need them done correctly before we can proceed.
Okay, I was unaware of that. I'm hoping after seventeen years to move forward, that's how long this has been in the works.
Well, I, to be honest with you, some of those stakes look like they've been there seventeen years, but, um, you know, I mean, it starts right out there, all lot corners, you didn't even comply with the first line, and, I mean, we treat everyone equally. You, you saw that by the last, uh, applicant, you were here, and, uh, I mean, if you watch us, I mean, we're, it's important.
So let's make a motion to June fifth again.
Well, is June fifth open?
Yeah.
Motion to continue?
Wait, I, I guess one other...
Go ahead, through the chair.
The applicant's also asking to stay in the residence while construction, again, should the town council review that?
That's a, that's a good point.
I have no issue with that, but I just...
No, that's a good point, Scott.
I just want to make sure that it's fair, we don't want them to come and then something else to happen and, and delay, so...
Well, I would have figured that would be the most important issue for you guys, because based on a conversation I had with Gary's predecessor, he wasn't all that nice to me about it. This is about six or seven years ago, he said, "No, we're not gonna give you a permit to do that." I go, "Why not?" He goes, "Well, we had someone else do that," and my words, not his, they gave the town the middle finger, and they said, "We're just gonna live there anyway," and they put up a breezeway, it's like, "I'm not gonna do that." Gary called me one day to shorten his day and his schedule, and I said, "Gary," this is exactly what I said, "We could walk around that house in five minutes and I'd convince you, I don't want to live there." So, you know, no one's gonna be sneaky at the last minute and put up a breezeway and try to live in both houses, it's like, that house is so old and so crappy, it's so poorly insulated, my snow melts off the roof, there's barely a foundation on the northwest side by the road, it's an old junky house, I don't want to remodel it and live in it. I'm building a new house, I'm gonna go broke and lose my mind building a new house, so I can get rid of this old ugly house. There's no lighting and no...
You're getting, you're getting beyond, I mean, you haven't even made it to step one, and, I mean, you are asking us for something that's out of the ordinary, and, and I'm not adverse to it, and I don't think anybody is here, but you have to abide by the same rules that everyone else does.
I think Scott's motion to, uh...
I want to be clear, Madam Chair, yeah, I just want to be clear, Scott's asking for because it would require, uh, him, he's asking to live in the house, that is a variance, uh, and that we're asking the town council to weigh in on?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think it absolutely is.
We have a, we have a motion for June fifth, second, right?
I'll second.
And a request for an Alpine. Okay.
Hopefully, we can do everything at once and you can...
Can you tell me what I need to stake?
It's in the application.
There's two driveway stakes that were missing, I didn't realize what a big deal it was.
Corner lots missing, your corner bound is, uh, the, the concrete bound has been moved, um, you're, you're gonna have to, uh, get a stake there or replace the bound. Um, you know, I mean, I stepped on it and moved it some more, I mean, it's...
Like you said, you got a good engineer, just get them back, they know what they're required to do, they'll make...
We don't have to really think, but then, I just want to make sure that what I'm gonna...
Can I spray paint a spot on the driveway where those two stakes?
Which was exactly what I was going to suggest, that if that's acceptable to the board, that spray paint, we're staking if it's obstructing the driveway?
No, that, I mean, I got no problem with that, but moving them around, uh...
Yeah, of course.
That didn't happen.
Can I put an orange spray paint spot where those two white stakes go for, in the driveway?
The engineer has to do it, the surveyor has to do it.
They usually put a pin, they'll put a pin in there, to your point, spray painted orange.
Yeah, with an orange, with an orange plastic strip.
He knows, he knows what we want.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, we have a motion to second, everybody's all set to vote? All those in to continue to June fifth? Aye?
Aye.
All those in?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Noreen, are we doing any minutes? Let's, let's do February, just so we can pretend it's not winter.
Let's get February behind us, winter.
I believe I have sent you February twenty-seven, March thirteen, and March twenty-seven.
Ooh, all right. I'll make a motion to accept February twenty-seven, twenty-five, March thirteen, twenty-five, and March twenty-seven, twenty-five.
Second?
We got a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. All right, two, request for insubstantial change. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record attorney Kevin Erickson, on behalf of, uh, Falmouth Hospitality LLC, here before you tonight, seeking a determination of insubstantial change. Um, the architectural change in question pertains to a small portion of the east elevation of building one. Briefly, there was an extension of the fourth floor roof line of that area by five and a half feet. There was also a window added to the building in that location. Um, that particular unit in the corner there increased by about twenty square feet. Um, as the board's aware, seven sixty CMR fifty-six details the type of changes that would be considered insubstantial. Examples of those in the regulations include increases in height of the building of less than ten percent, increase in total unit count of less than ten percent, increase in total bedroom count of less than ten percent, reduction in size of the lot by less than ten percent. So in this, in this instance, um, you know, we certainly believe that this qualifies as an insubstantial modification, um, we do understand that the normal course of business here is that this should have been presented to the board prior to implementation, uh, through inadvertence and mistake, the development team, that process wasn't followed, so we do apologize for that.
Just to, uh, clear this up, building one is the building that was built second?
I'm not sure of the chronology of it, I apologize.
This is the one that got the cease and desist on the corner?
That's correct, and that, this pertains to that modification, correct.
I thought I saw them taking it down. The incorrect, they added like a window and they added square footage.
They added a window...
Taking it down.
I don't think they removed it, I think they were told they cannot work in that portion of the fourth floor because the cease and desist was issued, and then I know Republic Building Contractors filed, um, the current insubstantial change modification. Um, I drew the straw to come here tonight, um, and present it to this board, um, but it is, it, that unit did increase by about twenty square feet because of the linear, uh, five and a half foot extension, and there was a window added.
That's the building closer to Duncan Dunn, right?
Yeah, it's right next to it.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, you're saying building one was built second, yeah.
Can we get a couple of abrevities thrown out there or something? I mean, what, do we get extra room? I mean, it's hard for me to believe that architecturally, people following plans...
They can't follow the plans.
That you just add five feet and a window, it's kind of, I understand the insubstantial aspects of it, but to, to me, there should be a give-get.
Yeah.
Is there anything submitted by, like, in a way of a written description or a plan showing what you're talking about?
Yeah, there was a, there was a submission with the application that highlighted the, um, the sheets of the plan that were modified, um...
This is actually a result of an abutter complaint, isn't it?
Yes.
I've not seen the abutter complaint.
Observation slash complaint.
They really did just tell you, "Go, go to Falmouth."
Look, a quick question, what if, what if this board decided not to do that? I mean, I agree with Mr. Peterson that, you know, both of us have done, been involved with these types of projects, and pretty, it's a pretty hard thing to do when you're not a replant, to do something like this.
It makes you wonder what else is there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand how something happens, especially with a company like that.
I think it's honestly, in, in, it's human error, it's a mistake.
It's a lot of humans to make a lot of errors, though.
I understand it.
So just like one human.
I understand, and, and that does happen, and, and humans do make mistakes.
But I'd like to ask, let me get an answer to the question, what happens if this board did not approve it?
Was it insubstantial modification, um...
They go back to their real plan.
Before or after, or, or if, if the board didn't approve it as an insubstantial, there's other appeal options available to the applicant, it doesn't have to necessarily be removed. We obviously don't want to go that course, especially in this case, I, the, the changes truly so minor, I would have always advised my client to, if it had been observed and, and brought to anyone's attention ahead of time, "Yeah, let's file for the insubstantial modification." If that's done beforehand, I understand that can be, even be handled, uh, administratively without a, a body even coming to this board, um, that'd be my preference a hundred percent of the time. So I do apologize that I'm here tonight, taking up your time and my time, um, but truly, it, it, it was a mistake.
So for the...
Can we ask for some dispensation?
Right, so, well, so for the board's edification, if you, so tonight, you have to determine if this change is insubstantial or not. You, you cannot just decide you don't like it or it's a change, you have to decide insubstantial or not. I passed out to everybody just a cheat page from seven sixty CMR fifty-six, which describes to you basics about what the court is determining to be a substantial or insubstantial change.
But a screw-up shouldn't be a...
Right, but, but here's the problem, is that the court is very specific, and they don't reference errors in plans or not. What they say is you have to evaluate what's before you and determine if it's substantial or insubstantial, and only if you determine that it's substantial, and that has to comply with what the court refers to as substantial, then you would hold a hearing within thirty days, and it would be advertised, and people would be invited to come in. But I would suggest to you that separate from people feeling dismayed that this was an after-the-fact request, if you look at what they carve out for substantial versus insubstantial, talking about it's a state regulation, and the state is zoomed out, so what's important to you is not what's important to the state, and not specifically supporting the applicant, but supporting the applicant, they do fall within what the court determines as an insubstantial change. That being said, it's the board's determination.
So you're saying it's an ins, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, you're, you're saying that this is an insubstantial change?
That change, that, that...
Point oh 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 one percent.
That, that finding is left to the board. Um, I would suggest to you, based on the parameters that the state provides you, that you would have a very difficult time determining otherwise.
May I make a motion that we determine this to be an insubstantial change?
Yeah, I'll second.
So as, prior to your vote, once you determine it's an insubstantial change, it's automatically approved, there's no further steps, but, but this is...
And what if he goes and finds it, because I saw it being taken down, he doesn't even know.
Well...
What if he goes back and it's back to the real plan?
I don't, I don't think it was taken down, you probably saw them preparing to construct this.
Well, I saw them, um, taking big boards down next to that window that's not supposed to be there.
Why don't you just go out twelve feet?
Yeah.
I, I just don't...
It's unbelievable.
That there's no, you, you, the applicant won't even come up with a solution for the abutter?
Yeah.
Or, or the town, so why don't you just build it twelve feet over next time?
The only reason we're here is they got...
It's the flaw of the statute.
Yeah.
And the regulation.
Yeah, you can't.
Twelve and ten, or five... I know, I know, it's, it's hard to stomach that we have all of these engineers...
Yep.
With GPS in my pocket, they can't get it right, and then they come to the board and say it's insubstantial, with no dispensation for the town.
Nothing, yeah.
Or the abutters.
Well, I think, I think the board could certainly...
Make your motion.
You know, comment to the applicant that they anticipate that these future errors will not occur, or that if there's a change, they will come back and ask prior to.
All right, Frank has a motion that's an insubstantial change.
Seconded by Mark.
It's seconded, all those in favor of the...
Insubstantial.
The move, the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Well, it's three to two.
Support or out?
Doesn't matter, but thank you for your time.
Who voted no?
Madam Chairman, the administrator, a question for the purpose of the minutes.
I, I was just asking, who voted no?
Mark and Scott. Did you get second and all that too? Okay. All right, moving on. Yeah, that's crazy, it is crazy. Uh, zoning administrator updates.
Um, given the...
I want to praise you for doing the, the YMCA, thank you. Now, I know that must have been a, a ton of work, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome. So I'll just whip through a couple of these, um, eight thirty-six Palmer Ave, which is the campground, actually, you voted, but I wrote it up for you, uh, they're just gonna submit a yearly occupancy staffing. Uh, three twenty-six, East Falmouth Highway, which is everybody's favorite ice cream desk... will not occur, or that if there's a change, they will come back and ask prior to.
All right, Frank has a motion that it's an insubstantial change.
Seconded by Mark.
It's seconded. All those in favor of the.
Insubstantial.
The move, the motion. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Well, it's three to two.
Support or out?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, but.
Thank you for your time.
Who voted no?
Madam Chairman, the administrative question for the purpose of the minutes.
I was just asking, who voted no?
Mark and Scott. Did you get second and all that, too? Okay. All right, moving on. Yeah, that's crazy. It is crazy. Zoning administrative updates.
Given the.
I want to praise you for doing the YMCA. Thank you. I know that must have been a ton of work, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome. So I'll just whip through a couple of these. 836 Palmer Ave., which is the campground. Actually, you voted, but I wrote it up for you. They're just going to submit a yearly occupancy staffing. 326 East Falmouth Highway, which is everybody's favorite ice cream destination. They are adding an eight-by-eight freezer on a pad at the west to accommodate more ice cream for everybody.
More ice cream?
Yep.
Who scream? We all scream.
It's critical. 33 Sandpiper, they are removing, or they, yeah, they're removing an exterior set of stairs and replacing with a bulkhead. 1220.
Who is he?
Nathan S. Ellis Highway. We have issued them administrative approval for their annual Barnstable Fair, which you all need to attend. And 269 Grand Ave., they have added a 12-by-8.5-foot shed for food distribution.
I like that you're doing Barnstable County Fair.
Yeah, I think, you know, it certainly relieves the board of some.
No, that's good.
I kind of enjoyed it last year.
You would. Board discussion. We got Saturday, board updates, and future gen items. Futures.
One question on that. Norine, is it still too late to add something for discussion on Saturday?
No.
If we can, if we get minutes out, or is it two days or three days?
Two days.
Yeah, so the.
Forty-eight hours.
Right, but it's business days posting, so because today is Thursday, you would be officially out of luck, other than we have miscellaneous.